All right, good evening. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. If you'll all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask Councilman Boone to say tonight's invocation.
My name is Frank. Dear Father, Lord, again, we come to you and thank you so much for the great lessons you've given this town. And we thank you for the opportunity to live here in this beautiful community, Lord. Lead this council, Lord, as we go through the decisions we make, to make the decision based on your will, Lord. Lead, guide, direct us, Lord, in all that we do, and again, thank you for all that you have done. In your blessed, holy name, you pray.
Amen.
Praise to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Boone, for that invocation. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the special called City Council Meeting of September the 5th. The minutes of the September 10th regular City Council Meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings. Do anybody have any suggestions to change? Any additions or deletions to these minutes? Okay, hearing none. All accept a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, those minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. Last Thursday, I was invited to the first-ever Women Mayors of America White House Conference. The invitation was from the White House of Intergovernmental Affairs, which focuses on building relationships with state and local officials. Approximately ninety mayors from all over the country, six hundred were invited. We were briefed by key female administrative officials and policymakers. We had the pleasure of meeting with the Second Lady, Karen Pence, and Vice President, her husband introduced her, Secretary Betsy DeVos, Small Business Administrator Linda McMahon, and members of the Workforce Economic and Development Panel. And then, as we ended the conference, with Assistant to President and Senior Counselor, Kellyanne Conway, Assistant to the President and Director of Legislative Affairs, Shaheera Knight, Assistant to President and Senior Advisor for Strategic Communication, Mercedes Schlop. Out of all the conferences I've had the honor of attending on behalf of the city, this was by far the most meaningful. I wanted to announce our new Marina manager. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Sean Say. If you can stand up, please. There he is in the back with his hand risen. He just replaced Drew, who left recently. Sean has been sailing out of our marina for seventeen years, and I understand knows it well, and is prepared to help us bring it forward and make it an even better success. So, thank you, and welcome aboard. Also, Philip Bolin, if he's in the audience. There he is. Welcome aboard. He is our new museum director, and he replaces Donnie Barrett, who retires on October 1st. Philip's extensive background will move the Fairhope History Museum into the next phase of its own rich history. Welcome both of you to the City of Fairhope family. And now, the rest of it, I'm going to do down there. We have a lot of people to recognize. First, I want to give a proclamation to the Fairhope Elementary School. And the Alabama State Department of Education recently announced that fifty schools across the state would share a million dollars allotted by the Alabama Legislative Arm for 2018. The fifty schools that will receive this earmarked funding are recognized for their efforts in showing the most improvement in last year's third-grade reading results. We are incredibly proud of all fourteen of our third-grade teachers at the Fairhope Elementary School. I'd like the following teachers to come forward to be recognized for their above-and-beyond efforts at helping to shape the future of our youth. Nicole Arnold, Leslie Davis, Julie Girsten-Schlogger. And I did hyphen, so I could do it better. Thank you. Jennifer Gilmore, Jamie Gregg, Tara Lazenby, Wilson McDuff, Elizabeth Mitchell, Caterie O'Connor, Elizabeth Orfanello, sorry, everybody, Crystal Phelps, Courtney Terry, Emily Workman, and Jamie Wren. Also, our reading coaches, Heather Hepworth and Carolyn Howell. Reading Interventionalist, Dula Reel. Assistant Principals Everett Hale and Wanda Logan, and also Jody Blome. I also, of course, want to congratulate our Principal, Julie Pierce. But she said that it's for everybody else up here, so let's give them a round of applause. Congratulations. Okay. students want to become more involved in their city. Our students are our future, and I believe it's important that they take an active role in leadership at an early age. By their responses to the request for applications to join the Junior City Council, I am assured our students feel the same way. The Junior City Council will have regular meetings, and while their efforts will be as varied as their interests, they will be focused on communication since their primary task is to keep young adults apprised of what is happening within their city. I am pleased to recognize this year's members of the newly-formed City of Fairhope Junior Council. If you can come up, please. Daria Leggett of Fairhope High School. I'm going to announce you all, so if y'all want to just come on up, it's fine. Eleanor Johnson, Fairhope High School. Peyton Aiken, Fairhope High School. Erin Casolero, and Fairhope High School. Chris Miller, Bayside Academy. Claire Kiernan, Fairhope High School. John McInnery, Bayside Academy. Kaylee Spears, Fairhope High School. Grayson McKean, Fairhope High School. Victoria Watley, Fairhope High School. I want to congratulate this group of young adults for your willingness to serve our city, and we appreciate it. And congratulations. Should we make two lines? Get the color ones in the back here. Now, I want to hand over the last few minutes to Charlene Lee, who's going to talk about the walking school bus. Charlene, are you here? Oh, Charlene, I was looking for you in the back.
Here you go. Thank you. And my name is Charlene Lee, and I direct the walking school bus in Fairhope, and it is an absolute delight to be a part of the walking school bus. And we're here tonight, I really want to thank the City of Fairhope, the mayor and the council for your support from the very beginning. When this idea came up to create a pilot walking school bus, there's not another one in the state of Alabama, so there was no other example of any other city doing this or any other school had chosen to do this on a daily basis to look at, to see how they had done the program. So, Fairhope initiated it, and Fairhope Elementary School was the school that initiated. I think it takes a lot of courage to do something that no one else has done. And this city, and this school, and our partners did that, so we are extremely grateful. One of the things I did not realize when we started, and we had twelve to fifteen kids the first year, that's all we got. Every year, it doubled, and doubled, and doubled. And we didn't quite know how it was going to go as a pilot, so now we're in year six. We're walking in excess of a hundred students every day. And what I didn't know, though, is that families were going to walk. I thought we were just walking kids. Well, we're not walking kids, we're walking families. We're walking mamas and daddies, and triplets, and twins, and the family dog, and the grandparent. And we are walking entire families, choose every day to come out with their child because it's kind of their family tradition now. They all walk together, so we make good use of these Fairhope sidewalks, and we are so grateful to live in a town that does have and value walkability and sidewalks, so that's a real exciting thing. So, our initial partners, we always, the city, the police department, everyone in the city has cooperated from the beginning. So, we've had the city, we've had Baldwin County Trailblazers, who is a local nonprofit. They have always supported this, and it's under the umbrella of the Trailblazers. And Jen, if you were to stand up, Jen's one of our Trailblazer members here, and we're happy to have them. And Julie, will you stand up, please? Fairhope Elementary School has been essential. And of these third-grade teachers, an interesting thing, four teachers walk every day with a walking school bus as a part of their morning duty. And three of our walking teachers are actually third-grade teachers, so I don't know whether walking makes you a better reader or something, you know, a better reading instructor, but they've been there from the beginning. And if you'll stand up, Julie and Wilson, and they're two of our walking teachers. Our other ones are not able to be here because they've got other duties, but thank y'all very much for the support of this school. And so, tonight, we want to present the mayor and city council with a little present. And so, we've got two of our walking students. This one, you probably know quite well, she's been pretty involved already in politics. So, we've got some T-shirts, some walking school bus T-shirts.
Thank you, Bud.
Love it.
Thank you very much.
And we would like to invite the mayor and city council to walk with us on October 10th, which is International Walk to School Day. And it will be early in the morning, of course, so you've got to get up. And the T-shirt is so the traffic sees you, okay? So that we know, you know, you cannot miss these T-shirts. When you see us walking down, everybody sees you, so it's a real nice safety feature. And also, the sponsors on the back of the T-shirt, Alamo and City of Fairhope in their support. We have gotten a lot of local business sponsors and individuals that are essential to covering the cost of making a program like this run. So, we're real proud to have our sponsors. Let me see if I've left anything out. Nope, that's pretty much it. Does anybody have any questions? You will have fun walking.
What time is it going to be? What time do you mean?
Well, we start walking at 7:20. So, you need to get there between 7:10 and 7:15, and then you will watch what children do when they have free play before they start the school. So, one of the things to recognize is these children get to school, and they've already settled in, because they've played and run and done all kinds of things in the morning before they start the school. And another point that I think's incredible about the walking school bus, we probably take fifty to seventy-five or more cars out of the carpool line every morning, because instead of those cars in the long line, they're parking at the library or somewhere else, and they're walking. So, thank you, city, very much for your support, and the school and the teachers for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and congratulations to all of our junior city council members, and congratulations to the teachers, third-grade teachers. And Charlene, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item will be public participation for agenda items only. If you would like to speak to items six through eighteen, five is a public hearing, so you'll be given an opportunity at that agenda item. So, if you would like to speak to items six through eighteen, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone for items six through eighteen? Okay, seeing no one, I will close public participation for agenda items, and I will remind the audience that there's another opportunity to address the council on non-agenda items at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Council comments. Councilman Robinson.
Yes, sir. I'll be brief. I want to invite everybody, tomorrow night, the Common Sense Campaign is holding an educational forum at the library to discuss the potential change in government in more detail. It starts at 5:30, and I think it will go until, it's designed to educate the public on the different types of government, Fairhope, what they have now versus what the change would look like if the change is voted into effect, and then additionally, what the consequences of that vote and the consequences of that change would be as far as voting districts and anything else. So, if you have any questions, and this is important, whether the vote occurs on October 2nd, or whether it occurs the month after, or two months after, everybody needs to be educated and understand what they're voting on, so I encourage everybody to come out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Tomorrow, yes. Yes, sir. Tomorrow night at 5:30 at the library.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Councilman Conyers?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of comments. First, it was great to see all the teachers here from third grade. That was a big victory for Fairhope Elementary School. Also, to the students that got named to the Junior Council, I personally know probably half the students and their parents, and I can tell you, they are some really impressive kids, really doing a lot of wonderful things, and the future looks really bright with people that talented. So, I just got to say, parents, if you're still out here, I see, at least see Tom Aiken still sitting out there. Congratulations. Keep up the good work. Y'all are raising good kids, and should be commended for that. Last comment, I just want to say, we had several good meetings. Fairhope Library Board met, repairs to the library underway, so far, so good. The Historic Preservation Committee met, we have several new members, so new time and new members, I think we might have some interesting information coming out of that organization. And then, the Environmental Advisory Board, we had a meeting a couple, I guess, a week and a half ago, and the main thing I want to point out, I know we've discussed Mobile Bay Keepers doing some watershed study, I wanted to point out that they are having, the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program's going to be doing the Fly Creek Watershed Management, and that is going to include pathogen testing. And just to throw that out there, that's going to cover bayfront from Barnwell up to Daphne, so it's going to cover a lot of areas. So, I think Mobile Bay Keepers needs to be included in all that, but it might be something we want to look at doing under the umbrella of the Mobile Bay National Estuary Programs, Fly Creek Watershed Management. That's going to be a while before that actually takes place, it's going to be a real extensive study. Just putting that out there, we did meet and discuss that, so I know that's going to be forthcoming in the near future. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Conyers. Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I'll touch base on the, you know, the Mobile Bay Keeper study. The watershed is going to be a little bit more extensive countywide up and down the eastern shore, but I still would like to get, you know, details on what's happening here along the Fairhope coastline, just so we can let our citizens know where it's coming from. And also, remind council that the, what you just witnessed with the third-grade reading program would not happen without the funding through the AAC, so let's keep it up. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Boone?
Actually, I have no comments.
Okay. I have no comments tonight. We'll close council comments and move to item five on tonight's agenda. This is a public hearing, and this is an ordinance, amending zoning ordinance number 1253, a request to zone the property of LA Development LLC to a planned unit development concurrent with annexation to the City of Fairhope. This property is generally located on the north side of County Road 44, approximately nine hundred linear feet west of State Highway 181 in Fairhope, Alabama, and you can read those pin numbers if you would like. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Thank you. The ordinance has been introduced. Yes, sir.
And council members, thank you for having me here tonight, and this will be the first reading for the zoning, requested zoning for Twin Beach Estates. And we have the zoning map on your left of your screen and the aerial image on the right, and as the description described, is along Twin Beach Road just west of Highway 181. And I'll share just very briefly here, and council members, stop me at any point if we need to go back or look at another slide. This is the intricate details from the subdivision case related to this. What I'd call your attention to here, of course, LA Development as a developer. Sawgrass Consulting is the engineer of record. Mr. Doug Chaffin is representing Sawgrass, and he's with us here tonight. That is a 22.6 acre site. They're requesting seventy-two lots. What I'd call your attention here is that that is a density of 3.19 units per acre. A quick note here, that is a reduction from its original submission when the first reading that we had of it, actually, it's seventy-eight lots, which was 3.45 units per acre, and we'll reiterate this here in a moment, but the zoning case was approved by the Planning Commission on May 7th of this year, and the subdivision case related to it was approved on July 2nd of this year. These are some more details from the subdivision portion of it. What I'd call your attention to here is, this is my calculation, but the average lot size in this development is 7,828 square feet, and just to reiterate, this would be a conditional annexation to a PUD. Seventy-eight, twenty-eight is significant because that mirrors an R3 zoning district, which we'll explain in a future slide, and the rest of the basics of the subdivision are there on the screen. What we did here was provided a little bit more detailed breakdown on the lot sizes, and we won't go through it line by line, but what I would like to illuminate is that you have some lots that are as large as 12,000 square feet, some that are 10,200 square feet, a number of lots that are both 9,000 and 8,000 square feet. The largest number of lots are actually 6,200 square feet, and you see your typical lot widths through there, which vary from 52 feet all the way up to 100 feet. We'll explain where those 100-foot lots occur in just a moment. And on the far right, I modeled where that falls in comparison to existing typical zoning districts. When we consider a zoning case, one thing that we always do is utilizing student yield factors provided by the Board of Education staff, and utilizing their numbers, that this development would generate 48.26 students for Fairhope Local Schools. And the buffer analysis and the compatibility analysis that we've seen now a couple times is a bit complicated, and what I'll try to do here, for sake of time, is try to synthesize that. This is one of the earlier cases that we considered. The other was part of Firethorn. And in this one, we still were using a one-half-mile buffer. On more contemporary cases, you'll see in the future, we'll reduce that to one-quarter mile. We did continue to substitute a 2.9 unit per acre zoning density for unzoned undeveloped properties. I've shown here what that actual density would be within that buffer area you see on the screen right there. It would come to .9011 units per acre. So, I'm reporting here and making it clear, you know, that we have substituted 2.9 to yield. And on this second slide right here, this is where we arrive at the point, because we explained that you have 750.9 acres that you evaluate, you subtract the subject property. And what this yields is 2.47 units per acre weighted average development density within that analysis area. And for the purpose of this one, again, this one being an earlier version of us using this process, we generated 2.47 units per acre like we mentioned earlier. So, here's the conclusion. They're requesting 3.19 units per acre development density for this PUD, that's approximately 29% greater than the average development density of 2.47 that we mentioned earlier. Now, they, of course, did reduce their original request by approximately 12% when we first saw the case in February. So, the question the staff, as we're evaluating these types of cases, to ask the applicant, ask the engineer, is, it is a PUD, so there are certain elements you may include in that PUD. What are some of the ways you're going to mitigate or justify your additional density? And so, one example was, and one thing we discussed with them, is your lots fronting upon Twin Beach Road, because south of the development, on the south side of Twin Beach Road, you have an existing subdivision where the lots are all 100 feet wide and 15,000 square feet. We looked at that area and isolated it to compare it to the same area fronting on Twin Beach Road by this development. And so, you'll see right there that we calculated 2.45 units per acre density right in that area on the south side. What you have here on this slide is you'll notice, when the original Twin Beach Estates subdivision was considered, it was allowed to, it was allowed to remain in the county, so you had seven lots. Now, the subdivision process is going to replat those and then subdivide the balance of the site. If you compare how it was on the top versus the proposed on the bottom, you notice the bottom slides, especially lots two, three, and four, those are your 12,000 square foot size lots. Each of those are at least 100 feet wide. Lot one is about 86 feet wide. You notice 11 and 12 right there, their orientation has been turned, so that way, its longest lot line is fronting upon Twin Beach Road. And I'll explain it also, I'll explain the open space area that you see at the bottom, I'll explain that here on a future slide that illuminates that. So, the conclusion from that is, this is one example of how they justify their density and use it in a PUD. So, lots 13 through 19 of that Wally subdivision we discussed earlier comprised about 2.86 acres. That yields about 2.45 units per acre actual development density. If you compare that to a similar region of similar size on the north side in the subject development, that yields you 2.16 units per acre actual development density. And they attained that, if you look at the last couple sentences here, that region of cat and bata Billy was created by increasing the lot width of lots 34 and 36 from 52 feet to 100 feet, increasing the lot width of 37 to 86.6 feet, it was 52, increasing the lot width of all the outer perimeter lots to at least 75 feet. Lots one and lots 34, 7 do not have egress directly onto Twin Beach Road, as does the Wally subdivision across the street. And council members, I must apologize, my slideshow does not have the full preliminary plat. It's in your press packet. I'll reflect that when we come back next time, should this case carry over. What we wanted to eliminate here, very quickly here, is we wanted to give you a color rendering, and you'll notice there's a green space, an open space, right along the Twin Beach Road right-of-way. This was originally proposed for green space, however, the subdivision regulations won't allow it to be counted as green space because it is along an arterial, which Twin Beach Road is. So, they've left it in there as a buffer area to provide additional buffering between all of those lots fronting on Twin Beach Road. Their green space is still sufficient for the subdivision regulations, so we get this as a bonus. Also, there is a sidewalk easement going through there as well that was handled part of the subdivision package. So, we'll get to our staff recommendation, and what we noticed here, without reading off the screen, at the macro level, we realize you have density that's requested that's greater than the analysis area, but at the micro level, we recognize the large unloaned lots that exceed the minimum lot size required by our one zoning district. The proposed lots along Twin Beach Road were compared to a similar geographical area encompassing the existing lots south of Twin Beach Road exhibited a density of 2.16 units per acre, 13% less than the development density of the existing lots fronting the south side of Twin Beach Road, which you saw in those previous drawings. And our staff recommendation, we make the note that the increase to lot size, the orientation of the larger lots, and the transition from larger lots to smaller lots, with the smallest lots located farthest away from the areas of lower density out on Twin Beach Road, that demonstrates the proposed development's compensation for its higher overall development density from adjacent areas and surrounding neighborhoods. In addition, the proposed PUD's development design includes compatibility measures to mitigate the impacts of the immediate adjoining properties, including the four items you see here. see here. The subject property is boarded to the east, north, and west by existing vegetation that shall remain in place, which we saw in the aerial photograph. We talked about the green space a couple of slides ago, which is item number two. And then we talked, and also just reiterating some of the previous discussion, the smaller 52-foot wide lots that are included throughout the development. That was originally, the entire development was based on 52-foot wide lots. Now we have both a combination of 75-foot and 100-foot wide lots and one that's 86 feet wide. Also, we note here, the average lot size of the development, 7828 approximately, that exceeds the minimum lot size of an R3 medium-density zoning district. So some examples of some nearby developments that are zoned R3 are River Mill, Callaway Place, and Fairfield Place. Oh, forgive me there. Let's back up here. So with that being said, I'll just mention again very briefly that the case number, this case, ZC 18.02, it was approved by the Planning Commission on May 7th, and the subdivision application has been approved, was approved on July 2nd. So therefore, the staff recommends that the requested conditional annexation to planned unit development should be approved. Councilmembers, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then also, like we said earlier, Mr. Doug Chaffin with Sawgrass is here as well if we have any questions for the engineer.
Questions, council, before we open up the public hearing?
How much time was spent on that compatibility study?
Councilman, this was, like we kind of joked about earlier, this was one of the first ones that we performed, so a lot of time, but we've definitely learned how to streamline it, and that's what I tried to synthesize for you here. Now, I can speak for myself, I'm a little better versed in using and downloading the county's property data, so we can generate that much more quickly now.
You mentioned the buffer space on the south side was a bonus. You said you can't count that as green space because it's on an arterial road. Is that because that could be forelanded in the future and thus taking that green space away?
And Council President, I believe-
So would it be short-sighted to say it'll never be taken away?
I think that is probably a function of the subdivision regulations, per se. And I'll turn it over to Wayne, he's going to help me out.
I wasn't here when that was created, obviously, but my suggestion would be is that having green space where you encourage people to play, like kids to play and things like that, would not be encouraged near a roadway that's heavily traveled. We want those to be more centrally located inside the development. I can envision a football going in the street or something like that from this common area, so I would suggest to you that that is a reason, because you are encouraging activity there that may not be compatible with traffic going by at a high volume of speed or high volume of traffic.
Okay. Other questions, council? Okay. We'll open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this PUD request, if you'll please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and we'll let this lay over to the next council meeting. Thank you. Item nine, is a resolution, the City of Fairhope adopts the entirety of number two CFR 200 Subpart D, this is going to be a mouthful, folks, bear with me, post-federal award requirements for the Code of Federal Regulations as the governing document for the financial and program management or compliance of all Restore Act of 2012 grants received by the City of Fairhope. And that two CAFR, I believe is how you say that, 200 Subpart D, post-federal award requirements of the Code of Federal Regulations is hierarchical to municipal and state procurement laws, regulations, and policies, and the stricter of the three shall govern, with no exception, that city treasurer, finance director, and purchasing manager in conjunction with the selected grant administrator shall produce and have adopted written policies to ensure complete compliance with the two CAFR 200 Subpart D, post-federal award requirements of the Code of Federal Regulations. Did you write that, Jay? Mr. Johnson, what does all that mean? This is a bunch of legal mumbo jumbo that we have to adopt before we can get the grant?
Correct. We are, the recipients of these funds is technically the state of Alabama. We're going to be a sub-recipient. So Sherry Lee and I got to have the wonderful pleasure to spend 16 hours learning, or at least being introduced to the Code of Federal Regulations, to CFR 200 Subpart D. But basically, in this process, and the good news is, we only have to do this once, and it'll apply to all of the buckets of funds that will eventually, over time, from the BP Restore Act come our way. But it is that we have to meet compliance with the Code of Federal Regulations. Sherry Lee and I did have the opportunity to meet with our representative from the Treasury Department about a week and a half ago, and the reality of it is, is it appears that we could get notice of availability of funds as early as the start of the new calendar year. But we have several housekeeping items that we have to do, and these next three items on your agenda are those housekeeping items. Part of this, we are required, and the process we'll go through, is an RFP for a grant administrator, okay? That'll be a third party. And that third party, once selected by this council, will be responsible to coordinate with all those people within the city who handle monies to make sure compliance is met. But the first part is adopting the regulations. The second part will be making sure we have policies and procedures in place to make sure we follow those regulations in this process.
You know, when you run for office, council, and they tell you, you better be careful of that federal money, and this will pertain to items six, seven, eight, and nine, is there any crazy regulations that are in these guidelines that are going to, you know, say you must plant yellow pansies when we want to plant orange pansies, or that the speed limit has to be so much on a street, or you're not going to get federal money? Is there anything like that in this?
No. But one of the interesting things, and I'll just give you an example, in the selection of professional services, i.e. engineers, architects, in the state of Alabama, you read the Code of Alabama, you're not supposed to ever talk about money. It's supposed to be purely selected on qualifications. Code of Federal Regulations, and you'll like this, Ms. Brill-
I like that so far.
-is that you determine a grouping of professional groups, and then you get to talk to them about money, and you can make the decision based upon qualifications and fees, which is, that's contrary to the Code of Alabama, okay? So that's why that's here. So there are actually some things that are a little bit more free in here. I think the biggest challenge is there's just a lot of paperwork from the financial side of it, because this will be in a reimbursement, and most of the stuff in here is making sure, you know, you file this federal form for this thing and that thing and everything else. But the procurement's not terribly, it's pretty straightforward. So a lot of emphasis on, and Marcus will reverse on this now, is disadvantaged business enterprise, minority-owned businesses, women's-owned businesses, making sure that you advertise very aggressively to those for not only professional services contracts, but the grant administration, as well as the actual construction contracts.
So things like those contractual obligations, are those only applicable to these Restore Act funds? And if we're doing something outside of that, we haven't adopted some regulation that we have to adhere to outside Restore Act funds?
This set of resolutions, if you pass them, is only to the Restore Act of 2012 grants received by the City of Fairhope. So it's even that narrow, it's not even other federal grants, it's only Restore Act grants.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson, council? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution or pass this resolution?
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Item seven, is a resolution, the City of Fairhope authorizes the formation of a selection committee that will be responsible for ensuring that the laws, rules, and regulations applicable to the Restore Act of 2012 will be followed in the selection and award of contractors to be paid with Restore Act grant funds, and that the selection committee for the Restore Act of 2012 grant project contracts will be comprised of the mayor of Fairhope, a city of Fairhope council member, the public works director, the planning and development director, the operations director, the economic and community development director, and that the selection committee will present recommendations for the award of all contracts to be paid for or with Restore Act grant funds to the city council at regularly scheduled council meetings, and all contract awards will be made by the mayor and city council. Mr. Johnson? Now, that looks like some of our language, maybe, because how would the federal government know that we have all those positions?
That is our language, what they said. This is kind of the chicken and the egg, to get the egg we need to get the chicken put together. One of the things that we're going to have to do is we're going to have to form an RFP for the grant administration, an RFQ for a design team for this Project One. And what the federal code says, that we have to have a committee, and it should be representative not only legislative, but the executive branch, and those are going to be interacting with this, to, one, oversee the construction of that, and then be part of the review and the selection and the negotiation, as well as all those functions that have to occur to get in place that compliance for selection of professional services. So that's what we're asking for here, is that authorization to establish this committee. Part of the things that you'll have to do is designate a member of the city council to serve, and there's nothing that says in the future, if they're worn out after a couple of these, that you'll want to rotate, you know? I don't think that has to be set in stone forever. But one of the things that we really would like to have completed is that you, as a council, have seen an RFQ and an RFP that is ready to go out as soon as treasury authorizes the spending of money. And if that's going to happen on January, we would like to have that completed as we go through this final quarter of the calendar year.
And this is strictly for the selection and award of contractors to be paid with Restore Act funds?
Well, actually-
This resolution?
-the council has to make the final selection. What this committee is doing is putting together the RFQ and RFP, which will come back to you for authorization to go out to advertise them. And then when they come in, they will serve as the review, they'll have to review all those submissions. Then we have to interview the top three or four or five of those groupings, and negotiate and talk about price, and then eventually come back to you as a committee and recommend, we think Firm X is the best choice for this.
You see where I was going with that? I was making sure we weren't circumventing state law by having a body that circumvents the council in selecting and awarding contracts.
There is, it is definitely appropriate that there needs to be a public, you know, acknowledgement, resolution of the selected firm based upon qualifications and fees. But somebody's got to do all that legwork before they can present a recommendation to you. And this will be that committee's role.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Johnson, council? Any other questions? Am I leaving something out?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or any further questions? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item number eight is a resolution, the City of Fairhope has adopted a policy regarding standards of conduct that complies with the applicable laws, rules, and regulations that apply to the Restore Act funds, and that a copy of this policy is attached to this resolution, and will be kept on file at the Fairhope City Hall, and will be available for review by the public as requested. Mr. Johnson, one more time.
And this is one of those items that we were given that says, hey, if you haven't ever passed this for a prior federal award of a grant, then you need to go ahead and do it. So it's just, and it's pretty straightforward, it is basically avoidance, a recognition that everybody involved is going to avoid conflict of interest, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You'll see that in your packet, council, pretty straightforward, something we'd be doing anyway. I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution, the City of Fairhope is authorized to enter into a partnership with the Fairhope Yacht Club for the dredging of the channel leading to Fly Creek Harbor with a 50/50 match. The city will let bids for the project and for the mayor to execute a partnership agreement. Ms. Mazur, I believe you said there was someone here from the yacht club, should we have questions?
Yes.
I know that there's been a lot of talk about this, there's been some back and forth between the city and city attorney about whether or not we can enter into this partnership without this work being bid. So I would ask you, does this resolution, is it just offering us to enter into a partnership, and then it would be bid on, or are we entering into a partnership for which something has already been bid?
It has already been bid, the yacht club did go out for it, but we must now, we can't work that way. Marcus, you can help me with the proper wording here. We can't just go into a partnership and accept that bid. We must do our own bidding. So we would start the bidding process all over again. We're essentially taking over the project, and then we would ask the yacht club to partner with us.
Okay. That's the way I read it, I just wanted to make certain.
Yep.
Are you good with that, city attorney?
Yeah, Ms. Craig. And also, if it's bid out by another party, if anything happens in the future, and FEMA was to be able to come in and give some funds to restore a silt in after a major storm, if it was done by a private individual, it wouldn't be available. Whereas if it's city and we're doing the work and we're bidding it out, those funds would be available at that time. So it's protecting some interests in the future that we may be able to get with FEMA.
Okay.
Just a thought.
All right. Very good. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Have I read the resolution, clerk?
Yes, you have.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
Some move?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I do want to make a comment, though, for the record, and I appreciate the yacht club working with the City of Fairhope and that, and that's very generous, and I wish that we had some other partners that were, you know, adding to this.
We're still working on that.
And we're working on that, but anyway, but kudos to the Fairhope Yacht Club.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Yes, sir. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Fairhope Yacht Club. Item number 10 is a resolution, Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute extension number two of the contract with Site One Landscaping Supply for perennial ryegrass, three-way blend seed for sports fields, bid number 033-16 for an additional one year as per the terms and conditions of the original contract, the approximate annual cost will be $25,000. Council, if you don't have any questions, I'll entertain a motion to award this contract?
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Item 11 is a resolution to procure fitness equipment for the rec center, and the equipment is hereby available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the Sourcewells Bid Process at a cost of $54,348. Anybody have any questions, the direct department about this equipment?
Nope.
I think this has been on the agenda once before, maybe. I'll entertain a motion to approve this purchase.
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion passes. Item 12 is a resolution to award an RFQ for the Bayview Avenue Sewer Main Repair Asphalt Paving for the Sewer Department to Amundson Blackman Construction with a total cost of Any questions for Public Works here? Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve this repair?
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Repair is approved. Thank you, council. Item 13 is a resolution that the governing body of Fairhope finds that the Eastern Shore Repertory Theater serves a vital public purpose and benefit for the Fairhope community, and as such, the city council authorizes its council member, Robert Brown, to negotiate and execute a contract for the use and installation of all necessary barricades for use at Henry George Park in exchange for the services it provides and continues to provide to the Fairhope community. The production of Matilda tentatively is scheduled from April 28, 2019 to May 5, 2019. Entertain a motion, pass this resolution? Entertain a motion, pass this resolution.
So moved.
We have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So are the fees falling under the new fee structure and everything's good with that? We cleaned all that up from last year? Anybody answer that?
I don't know that we got close, and then we got hung up on the barricades.
Okay, so this is only for the barricades, or they're paying the same fees that they paid last year?
That's right.
Okay, they put in the application for that, then? I guess, Robert, do you know?
I'll check, but yes, I believe they did.
All right.
Otherwise, I wouldn't be on here.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, granting this, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 14 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves a request from the Baldwin County Home Builders Association to place tasteful directional signs to assist the public in finding the homes they wish to view during their annual parade of home schedule for two weekends, September 29th, 2018, and September 30th, 2018, and October 6th, I think that's through October 7th, 2018. The first one would be 29th through the 30th. These signs are not allowed to be placed in the City of Fairhope's flower beds. Entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item 15 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure an AC unit for the Boys and Girls Club Gym. The unit is available for direct procurement through the U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance, therefore it does not have to be let out for bid. The bid has already been nationally bid through the U.S. Communities Bid Process, the cost is $8,736. This is not a budgeted item. Just have one question, how old is this unit? Just an old unit? I know, we made some repairs to that building fairly recently, but I don't know if it included that.
It's about eight years old.
Eight years, okay, excellent.
It's got a microchannel coil on it, this is one of the newer units that was there. It's sometime in the past, maybe it was washed with some harsh coil cleaner, and it's eating the microchannel coil up, the aluminum coil up on it, and of course, that resulted in moisture getting in both seal systems. I had it in the budget for next year to change, not that one, but another one, but we're gonna have to change this one at this time. They're down to one unit in that gym out of three, so.
How do we prevent that in the future? Do we put some warning on there, don't spray this with type A coil cleaner?
Well, hopefully, my guys will be washing it in the future, you know, we won't be hiring it out. I can't control things that happened in the past.
Oh, you think it's a subcontractor, a maintenance contract that did that?
Yes, sir. And the other one's probably not far behind it, but I'm hoping it'll make it, you know, a while, we'll just have to see.
Any questions for Lance, Council? Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of this AC unit.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, Council. Item 16 is a resolution, the city council hereby stays the termination of the contract with Utility Service Company at this time, and leaves the notice of termination in place and amends the contract to increase the amount of liquidated damages in the amount to be negotiated by the engineer of record. And I believe that we have, Mr. Peterson, you are the engineer of record, and the negotiated amount is $2,000 per day after December 31st?
Yes.
Can we place that in the, Council? I would advise that we just go ahead and place that in the resolution, and might just amend the contract, would it not, Clark or attorney? Can we just go ahead and knock that out?
You can, you can authorize and do that. Also, one of the things that bond council requested this afternoon was that we acknowledge that the notice of termination was actually stayed with four days remaining on the 30-day notice period. It's a two-step process to terminate, a 30-day notice, and then you terminate, there are four days remaining on that 30-day notice, and they'd like to have, bond council would like to have that remain in place. Instead of terminating the notice itself, you just stay the notice, and that leaves the four days remaining on the balance. And then you could put the $2,000 per day.
Right, and we had prepared a contract amendment, basically, then, and we talked about additional space where the school board has allowed us to move the fence back and create space, and then they looked at the potential to cover some of the substation work, so the amendment to the agreement added a few stipulations that they had talked about, too, which, the only difference between all of what I think we're prepared to agree to, and what Marcus is describing, is the difference between them wanting us to rescind the notice of termination versus, as Marcus has, you know, encouraged, to, let's just make it a stay of the notice of termination.
That way, we don't have to go another month before we terminate.
Right, so we stay the notice of termination.
We stay the notice, and I like that, I think that's a good idea.
Stay the notice of termination, make, and then you said that there are other contract stipulations. Mr. Peterson, I don't wanna get the cart ahead of the horse, we can say that the liquidated damages would be $2,000 per day for any days not completed beyond December 31st, 2018. What other contractual items?
Well, just, we had agreed to work with them on getting the school board to allow us to use more property for other staging area, and we had talked about access to the substation as part of what they would like to do to, you know, to protect their interest in working next to it.
How can we wrap that up?
I think I do just say...
Recommendations of the Director of Operations.
But if it can be in a resolution, that would be great. Marcus, you have a copy of that contract amendment, which...
It looks fine, the only thing we needed to do was change that one provision in there about the stay versus rescind, and I think that'd be it. I don't have a copy of it up here.
And can the resolution reference a contract amendment that would address that, too?
Well, that's what they, they're authorizing you to negotiate that.
Okay.
Yeah, but must include, we could say it'd include that liquidated damages, so can I get somebody to make a motion to amend the resolution that the city council hereby stays the notice of termination of the contract with Utility Service Company, and also increases the amount of liquidated damages in the amount of $2,000 per day beyond December 31st, 2018, and other items of consideration as negotiated by Director of Operations, Richard Peterson?
I'll make a motion to amend the resolution.
A motion to amend the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Feel good with that? Yes. Okay, all right, hearing no discussion, and the vote to amend the resolution, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, and then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the amended resolution. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Thank you. Motion passes, thank you. Item 17 is a request of Amanda Bacon, Forever Homes Animal Rescue, requesting permission to close the streets in downtown Fairhope on October 25th from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the Fairhope Witches Ride to raise money for the Forever Homes Animal Rescue, a 501(c)(3) Corporation. I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Hammer, any reason to deny this request?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, request is granted. Number 18 is a request of Ted and Renee Mashburn requesting permission to close Atkinson Lane on Saturday, October 13th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to midnight from the corner of Atkinson Lane at North Summit Street, and continue for 250 feet between Carlton Allen and Mashburn Residences. No other properties will be affected by the closures, there are two other exits on the street at Boise Lane and Bayview. This is for Neighborhood Social, be held at 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Officer, any reason to deny this request?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll, all those in favor of granting this request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, request is granted. Item 19 is public participation. If you'd like to bring anything else before the city council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Bob Riggs, 114 Chestant Ridge, Chestant Ridge, I don't know where I live. Y'all all received the happy news last week on the 20th, that the Board of Education ratified the contract to sell the K-1 properties to the City of Fairhope. That's great news. The second aspect of this sale is that the stipulation is that the property has to be used for non-public, non-commercial uses, excuse me, non-commercial uses for a period of 15 years. The property has been in the benefit of the public for more than 90 years, and it looks like that's gonna continue for generations. That's wonderful news. The third aspect of the contract that I find so positive is that, for the first time in the 17 years that I've lived in Fairhope, that the Baldwin County Board of Education is recognizing the tremendous contributions that the city makes to our five schools. Specifically, Robert, it recognizes that $300,000 that the city's providing through the monitoring of the AC to our schools each year. We're required to continue that for a period of five years, but that contribution will be deducted from the sale price. So the bottom line is $2.5 million for those three pieces of property. I wish it would just simply have been given back to the city, but given all the parameters involved, I think that's a mighty happy package. The city council, months ago, designated Jack Burrell to serve as the lead in negotiating this contract and the purchase of the property with the Board of Education. Jack, in turn, called on Jimmy Connors frequently and fully during this process, and Jimmy and Jack then led the negotiation. It was a complex negotiation process, I'm sure, an obstacle course.